It is 6:00. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This time we'll recognize Pastor Taylor from Central Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation. If you would, please stand.
Would you pray with me? Our God and our Father, we're so thankful for the time that you give us to be together tonight. We pray that you would be a presence in our lives. I pray that you'd be with the proceedings here tonight, that you'd give wisdom and discernment in every decision that's made. Pray that your power of your Holy Spirit do a work in our lives and that we would be a testimony to others and we'll give you honor and praise and glory for the great and awesome God that you are. In your name we pray. Amen.
This time Councilmember Gardner will lead us in both places.
Do you all men our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now let's take it.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Let me read you the certification of the election. In the name by the authority of the City of Odessa, Texas, this is to certify that the general election was held on November 6, 2018. Peggy Dean was duly elected councilmember at large. Congratulations. Now Judge Billingsley, come join us.
I'm pretty loud.
You said it, I didn't.
Listen, no, it's okay. So I have the privilege of swearing in my mama today, which is really very cool. So left hand on the Bible, right hand in the sky. I, Peggy Dean,
I, Peggy Dean,
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
execute the duties of the office
execute the duties of the office
of councilmember at large
of councilmember at large
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and to the best of my ability
will preserve
will preserve
protect
protect
and defend the Constitution
and defend the Constitution
and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mom.
Welcome to the council.
Thank you.
Would you like to place the name plate? The next, if I could have Tom Sprouls, please come forward. Says in the name and by the authority of the City of Odessa, Texas, this is to certify that at the general election held on November 6, 2018, Tom Sprouls was duly elected as city councilmember District 4. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if Judge Sparty, Judge Avi would come up and swear him in, please.
I thought Sarah was swearing him in.
Mayor, Judge Billingsley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judge Billingsley can do this one, then you're the next.
You know what, Judge Sparty, if you want to do it, you certainly can. You got it. Do you want your family to come up with you?
No.
You want to come up? No? Okay. All right. Left hand on the Bible, right hand in the sky. I, Tom Sprouls
I, Tom Sprouls
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office of councilmember District 4
of the office of councilmember District 4
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend the Constitution
and defend the Constitution
and laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's official.
Can we have one more round of applause for Councilmember Gardner? In the name and by the authority of the City of Odessa, Texas, this is to certify that a general election was held on November 6, 2018. Mara Willis was duly elected as city councilmember District 5. Congratulations.
I?
I. Mara Willis. do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of councilmember District 5
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of councilmember District 5
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States
and defend and protect the Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mara.
Thanks.
Hang around, you're next, too.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
In the name and by the authority of the City of Odessa, Texas, this is to certify that a general election was held on November 6, 2018. Dietrich White was duly elected as councilmember of District Number 3. Congratulations.
Saying I
I, Dietrich White
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
of councilmember District 3
of councilmember District 3
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend the Constitution and laws
and defend the Constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Okay, now we'll move to item four. There are no proclamations, awards, or presentations, so item five, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. Number one, consider a ward of a bid for downtown streetlights, phase one.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor of the council.
Hang on, Prov. Honor. Hold it down just a little bit.
This item is to consider a ward of bid for downtown streetlights, phase one. The bids for this project were opened on November 15, 2018, and three responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was denied electric in the amount of $967,612.18. Our estimate for this project was approximately $1 million. The purpose of this project is to install 52 streetlights around the downtown hotel and conference center and reconstruct nine street corners to make it more pedestrian-friendly. The city staff have reviewed the bids and recommend awarding the contract to deny them electric in the amount of $967,612.18.
Are there any questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honor. Next, public hearing. We'll open the public hearing to consider the annexation to the City of Odessa approximately 2,658 acres and land adjacent to the city limits through the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Landers.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the fourth and last public hearing required before the council can take final action on a proposed annexation. This is also the second ordinance reading where you have the opportunity to vote to annex these properties into the city. As has been discussed before, this annexation map shows properties in actually all four directions around Odessa, so it's very symbolic of the growth the city's having in all directions, although the clear majority of the land being annexed is in the southern part of town and actually south of or adjacent to Business 80, between that and Interstate 20. Just as a reminder, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to allow anybody in the public that wants to speak to do that. In furtherance of the prior direction for the city council, any property owners within the industrial districts that have decided that they did not want to be annexed at this time, who contacted the city, have been removed from the legal descriptions of the ordinance that you would pass if you approve it tonight. Also, all of those, since all of these industrial districts are expiring December 31 of this year, we will be bringing back renewal industrial districts for all of those property owners who chose to maintain the status quo by staying in an industrial district instead of being annexed. And those should be on your next city council meeting, the one council meeting in December.
Okay, any questions from council?
So, for the record, we're going to carve around, we're going to carve around those guys who do not wish to be annexed. Is that correct?
We will not annex, we will carve out or leave in place those portions of replaced industrial districts of the property owners who do not want to be annexed at this time. Yes, sir.
Okay, so nothing changes for them whatsoever?
The goal there is to maintain the status quo, councilmember, so that, that's why we'll bring forward replacement industrial district agreements at the next council meeting, so that they'll be in a new district, but it'll have a seven-year term like the original term and with the same conditions that they're already used to.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
And they will each be their own little industrial district.
Yes, councilmember, and since we are taking this opportunity to renew the districts, we're actually going to do this time, instead of having like one large industrial district four, we'll just have 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, for however many individual property owners are in there. That'll actually make it more convenient in the future if an individual property owner decided they wanted to be annexed or if the property was sold. But in any event, they'll be, we have to do separate agreements with everybody anyway, so we'll just make it more convenient.
So if they didn't oppose, we're automatically placing them in this annexation?
Yes, sir. They would be
If they did not respond whatsoever?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And at this time, there are 10, approximately 10, that have opted?
There's probably around 12. I had one more property owner today contact me in industrial district four.
Any more questions?
Could I get a list of those?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And they all are aware, the ones who are being carved out, they know this
Yes, yes, ma'am. I've talked with all of them individually or, and we've had more than one conversation between legal department staff members and that individual.
Can I get a list?
I don't have that list with me, but yes, I'll get that sent out to you. I should be able to do it tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. You can just give us your name and address.
My name is Armando Rodriguez. I live in 1206 Honeystuckle. One of the things is I did talk to more people, the business people that want to annex to the, that want to annex to the city, which I did mention that the possibility that that was going to happen. Lot of the people that I've talked to, they said they didn't know what it was or nothing like that to understand. One of the things is they did ask me this question that I could not answer, that y'all do have industrial taxes on them, not property taxes, but industrial taxes, which they asked me what they pay for, and to be honest, someone didn't even pay your industrial taxes. They would like to know what that money has been used for. And one of the things is that a lot of people have said that they've been asking the city to annex it with providing them sewer line and water line, which I was told that that is not going to happen to them in the future, maybe 20, 30 years from now. So the question was to them, the question they asked me, why are they paying something and they're not getting nothing in return? And one of the things is that I was, I told them that you get a note and stuff like that, and a lot of them said I didn't, maybe somebody did, or somebody from the office did, but they personally did not get a letter that I talked to the owners regarding to this. My concern is, you're going to do some dividing, some sections that they didn't want to annex it, which we, in my point of view, I'm going to have some problems because when they call me as a precinct, precinct, precinct for commissioners area, which I don't know which is going to be my part from the county, which part from the city, so I'm going to have a lot of problems to explain to them, no, you're annexed to the city, you are next, you're not. So my concern is, if we're willing to annex part of Midland County and we're willing to provide them water and sewer line and everything else, why can't y'all do the same thing for the south of Hector County? I don't think it's being fair for them to pay for something and then I get in something in return. I would really, really appreciate it to think about it before you do any kind of that decision. What you do to Midland County, you don't do to Hector County. So please, think about seriously what you're going to do, especially the new members of the city council. I don't know if you got that information before or not, but you're voting for something that I don't know if you have all the details about what's going to happen. And it's going to be hard for anybody to represent the people in the sections because we're going to have some confusion, no, you didn't exit because you didn't want to, yes, you did exit because they didn't tell you or you didn't know what was going to happen. One other thing is that I didn't mention to them, if they do an annex to the city, if they do any kind of changes to the property, they're going to be removed from the grandfather clause, and they have to follow your city rules and regulation, which they're going to be a little bit disappointed because they're going to be a little bit tougher.
Can you provide those names to the city manager?
No, the thing is that I did it in my concern, and I think if the city would have called me or talked to me, I would have, you know, personally would have given, you know, I would have gone with them and everything else, because they had more confidence, because they know me and everything else, they're willing to talk to me clearly, but they said, just give that information to them, and I'm a bit, you know, and at least I told them, I'm being honest and bring it to them. I don't know what they're going to do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mike, how true, how accurate is this? Are they, is there a different tax tier for individuals in or out of, or, well, I'm sorry.
I'll let Gary answer.
Gary?
When someone, the industrial districts that exist around Odessa are all foreign pursuant to a state law. It's not a, the state law authorizes the city to enter into an agreement for the council to create an industrial district. One of the requirements of that is in exchange for being in the industrial district, the city agrees to not annex that property for the term of the agreement originally set up as a seven-year term. With the idea, the idea behind the law is that eventually that property would be annexed. Prior Odessa city councils and the current city council, when these industrial district terms have expired, have chosen to renew them. So these were renewed for a seven-year term, an additional seven-year term, and then four years ago, the city council renewed them, but only for a three-year term, so that the city and the property owners could be thinking about the possibility of annexation. And then a year ago, when the three-year term expired, there was, they were renewed for another one year. So the process of notice to the property owners occurred at a minimum every seven years, and then four years ago, and then one year ago. Part of that arrangement provides that they don't pay city taxes because they're not in the city, but they pay what the state legislature calls a fee in lieu of taxes. We actually provide these property owners and the legal descriptions to ECAD, and ECAD comes up with what their property taxes would be if they had been in the city, and they send them a bill, it's called a fee in lieu of taxes. One of the interesting things we found out during this process is some of the property is sold and changed hands, and we didn't have the latest owner, and so we were able to work with ECAD and get new ownership and send information to those. And then we also discovered there are a few property owners who haven't been paying their fee in lieu of taxes, and we'll be following up with them once we get the annexation and the industrial district renewals in place.
So what are those fees?
The fees are the same amount as what the taxes on that property would be.
Okay.
The same amount. So when they're annexed, there's no change. Instead of paying the fee, they would just pay property taxes. And of course, as has been discussed before in the council meetings, the specific issue of water and sewer service, water and sewer that's provided by the City of Odessa is a separate fund, it's not paid for by property tax money, it's paid for by the service fees, by those people who buy the water and sewer. And then in answer to the question of what is the fee in lieu of taxes paid, Odessa is like most cities in Texas. Nearly all of their property tax goes to fund the fire department and usually a portion of the police department. And I believe that's similar here in Odessa, that the bulk of everybody in town's property taxes, as well as the fee in lieu of taxes, would be paid, would be spent to fund the fire department and a portion of police. The rest of that would be, of those costs would be paid by city sales tax.
So is this going to affect the residential areas or just the commercial?
Well, my understanding is that these industrial districts don't have residential areas. If, I'm not aware of any residential areas in the industrial districts. And the other properties that were annexing either requested annexation or they're owned by the city, or they're roadways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this? Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move to ordinances. Consider an ordinance to establish prohibited parking zones. Mr. Felton.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This ordinance deals with prohibited parking zones. There's a couple. The first one is West Loop 338. The east side of West Loop 338 is inside city limits, basically from BI 20 up to University. The second request was from Texas Tech, the campus over here. They're requesting that all their property street frontage be prohibited parking to aid in relieving traffic congestion on those streets, as well as increasing pedestrian crossing safety on those streets. Third request was from Noel Elementary. They're trying a new pickup pattern in the afternoon, so to keep traffic flowing, we're proposing to do no parking we're proposing to do no parking on the south side of Sunray Drive between Bookins and Ventura for the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., to aid in that school process. The fourth request was actually a request from the Village Place Apartments on East 11th Street between Milburn Avenue and Adams. It's currently a prohibited parking zone, they're requesting to, or remove that restriction to give more parking to their residents. They have both sides of that section of 11th Street. And the last one is West A Street, just inside West Loop 338. It's a request from Sagebrush Apartments. They're requesting that their frontage on West A Street be prohibited parking to aid in sight distance coming out of their driveways from that apartment complex. So that's what these prohibited parking zones are, and it went to the Traffic Advisor Committee on October 11th.
Are there any questions from council?
Not necessarily a question, I do have a concern. We're having trouble right now even enforcing people parking in their, in their yards, and we passed that ordinance, I believe, a couple of years ago. So what type of assurance do we have that we're gonna be able to enforce this as well? Because we're, you know, the police department is stretched pretty thin right now.
Between, between the, the ordinance and it being officially posted and the curb painting, it would be up to OPD enforcement if we receive a notice that someone is parking in those areas. So it would.
So it would have to depend on the officer either being in that area.
Availability.
Or someone calling in.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Don't you think though also, Mr. Feldman, that, that the owners of the property will be, since their request is, probably be pretty active in making sure that people don't park there?
That's a, that's a big help also, is, is if the property owner is helping in the situation, notifying the residents or their employees, that, that helps.
Apartment complex, university, etc.
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to get into effect? It's posted, I forget what you mentioned last.
What happens is, this is the second and final reading, there's a 30-day grace period, so we're looking at January.
Okay. Okay, are there any more questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, consider the ordinance amending the ordinance 2018-42 to provide for the appointment of two additional directors, members to the tiers board.
Good evening, mayor and council. The ordinance before you is to expand the existing tiers board to reflect our current council. The existing tiers board was adopted with five members, one for each district, and this then expands it to give the two new voting members a seat on the tiers board. It, so it expands our board from five to seven. If you wish to do that, you would need to approve this agenda item. If you wish to leave it at five by district, then you would need to not vote for this item or let it die.
Are there any questions from council? Not, I will entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I make a motion to increase the board number to seven.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Honor. Under miscellaneous, there are no appointments to boards or appointments of officers. Ms. Grimaldo, do we have any citizens commenting?
No, sir.
Okay. I may, we will need to remove from the table, so I will entertain a motion to remove from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to bring this back up. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So now back on the table. Is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, the city of Odessa will adjourn into executive session to deliberate the employment evaluations duty, discipline, complaint, or dismissal of public officers or employees. Municipal Court Judge Carol Gregg and Associate Municipal Court Judge Dennis Jones. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, going into executive session at 6:34. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It was unanimous, we are now in executive session. Let the record show, it is 7:03, and I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor of coming out of executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now out of executive session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Before we make the motion, have we had the judges, 3% raise, given to the other city employees? Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Hamilton is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Congratulations.
Thank you.